All right, we're up and running. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, April 3rd Board of Commissioners meeting. I'm gonna call the meeting into order. Sorry for the delay. We had a little bit of technical difficulties before we could get up and running this evening, so I apologize for being a couple minutes late. We're gonna do something a little bit different tonight. The Vice Chair is gonna take over and actually chair this meeting tonight. We're gonna give her a little bit of experience at running a meeting as I'm gonna find whatever meeting is the most loaded to disappear on her so that she has to chair that. So, we thought we'd start with an easy one tonight and do something a little bit out of the ordinary. And also, I will now hand it over to the more than capable Selena Jarvis for running this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I hope I don't make a mess of it. First thing is the invocation and pledge of allegiance. I don't have anyone signed up, but if there's anyone in the audience that would like to deliver the invocation, seeing no one, I will ask Commissioner Owen Etheridge if he would do the honors for us.
Let us go to the Lord in prayer. Father, we ask you this evening to bestow thy blessings upon each and every one in attendance and each and every one of the citizens that we have the honor and privilege to serve as commissioners. Father, we ask you in this times of our country that you bestow the wisdom that you did on our forefathers as they put together the documents that have guided us so well over the last 200-plus years. Father, blessed today as it goes through the evening this evening, and blessed tomorrow and blessed a week. Father, we ask all these blessings in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Etheridge. The next item on the agenda is the ethics awareness and conflict of interest reminder, and for that, I will call on our county attorney.
Pursuant to GS 153A-44, a commissioner has a duty to vote on matters coming before the board, but may be excused from voting on issues involving the commissioner's own financial interest, official conduct, or on matters on which the commissioner is prohibited from voting under GS 14-234 or 160D-109. In accordance with Chapter 2, Division 3 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances, it is the duty of every commissioner to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict. Does any commissioner have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before the Board of Commissioners in this meeting? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict.
Okay, thank you. Don't see anyone raising their hands, so we'll do the next item, and that's the approval of the agenda. I'm not aware of any amendments tonight, so if I could get a motion...
Motion to approve the agenda?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The next item is public comment. For this, I will ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. There are lights on the podium there to guide you if you decide to get a little long-winded. I would ask that as you come up, if you would please state your name and address for the record. And the first person I have signed up is James Memes.
Good evening, Board. James Memes, 105 Chestnut is my address. Tonight, I have a few topics I wanted to be brought up. First of all, at a previous meeting, it was disclosed that the message to the public from this board was that beach nourishments wouldn't come with a cost of increased taxes to those on the mainland. How? Secondly, why was a beach nourishment place is what seemed to be the most critical issue on the Currituck focus when it was on the front page, putting a beach nourishment ahead of the need for volunteer firefighters across Currituck County? Is this another work of the experts, ones like we saw at the previous meeting? I love to remind the attorney that was here at the previous meeting, as well as any other ones that attempt to silence the locals of this community that can't afford to pay someone to say what they want. Expert evidence and expert studies are public information. In fact, within the UDO subsection 2.3.8, Public Hearing Procedures, Paragraph 2 states, "Not bound by rules of evidence. The body may consider all testimony and evidence it deems competent and material to application under consideration." With that said, one day soon, one of those narrative experts are gonna walk into this room full of the very people that fund their jobs, and we're gonna stand in unity against these narrative experts. The locals are learning the ways. The locals are staying informed, and the locals saw what kind of experts these people bring. I'll leave the narrative experts with this, a little quote from Thomas Jefferson. "Your degree is just a piece of paper. Your education is seen in your behavior, attitude, and character." Finally, I must address the topic of protecting our children. I mention this because it touches the hearts and minds of those of you sitting in this room, those listening at home, and me as a father of two baby boys. It's not something that has taken place here, and I plead with the good Lord upstairs that it never does. I ask this body to be proactive, not reactive. I ask that we reach across the aisle, pick up the phone, and ask that we take a step in the right direction. Let's begin discussions and implement action to allow our teachers, that are lawful CCW holders, begin caring in our schools, and also ensure that when a validated hint or tip is received, that individuals are prosecuted and held accountable to the fullest extent of the law. This county is taking very effective steps. I have the highest respect for our law enforcement, and I appreciate you. Thank you for keeping my family safe, and our family safe. But one school resource officer is not enough. If we're ready to spend $10 million a mile, we better be spending $10 million a school to protect our children. I seek to talk with each of you more in depth regarding this topic, as I'm out of time. As always, thank you.
Thank you. The next person I have signed up is Peggy Lusk.
My name is Peggy Lusk. I live in Moyoc and have lived there for over 40 years. My address is 140B Street. And I am here in part for two things to mention. One is I am the chairman for the Moyoc Watershed Service District Advisory Board, and we have not had any meetings or any instruction for about two years on this. And I've had people come to me asking about why. There were monies left in the account that were to be used for the Moyoc drainage situation. And I also have new people that are interested, as the county is, or Moyoc especially, is growing. And so, that's my question, is why are we not still having those meetings? And if it is put back into place, we'd like to meet quarterly as opposed to less than that, to be more effective with the public and with the Board of Commissioners. And the other thing that I wanted to address was a request for the one-acre housing lots in the interest, again, of keeping density to a minimum, and I think that it also affects the drainage situation that everyone has a problem with. But going forward, and we are gonna be growing, we need to, I think, go back to something that we had at one time, which was one acre, and that also gives the county a more rural feeling with some of these new developments that are going in. And again, I've had people mentioning this. It's a topic of conversation, as well as, in Moyoc especially, the drainage. But that's my comment.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Okay. I don't have anyone else signed up. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to participate in public comment, if not, I will close public comment. And next is our Commissioner's report. We'll start tonight to my left with Commissioner Kitty Etheridge.
Thank you, Vice Chair Jarvis. It's nice to be back and able to serve again. I'm sorry I had to miss some of the county commissioner meetings and also my advisory board meetings. Exodus 14:14 reads, "The Lord will fight for you; you need only to be still." Sometimes, it's certainly not easy to be still. It's hard when you know there are things you want or need to do. But to heal, we need to listen to what God tells us. And on a lighter note, on Saturday night, I had the opportunity to attend the Currituck County Schools and CCS Theater production of SpongeBob Musical. From the orchestra to the cast and crew and the production team, it was truly a night of entertainment. Folks, there are a lot of talented students in our school system, and I'd like to say congratulations to them on a job well done. It was a great show. Last, as we enter Holy Week, may your Easter be filled with blessings from God. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Payment.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Okay, first of all, let me just start. Last week, the Vice Chair and myself had the opportunity to go to Raleigh to visit some of our state representatives. We got to meet with State Senator Hanig, the House Representative Ed Goodwin, and we met with State Senator Sanderson. And I'm gonna talk about one issue, but it was a good meeting. A lot of people saw us up there. They saw that Currituck, a lot of discussion was discussed that northeastern Currituck is developing, growth is seen, and it needs some attention. And we agreed. And one of the topics that came up was the infrastructure, specifically wastewater concerns that Currituck County has. Currituck County, we explained to them, we have some critical needs and some future needs with wastewater that needs to be addressed, and we'd asked for some support from the state to help the county with our wastewater needs. And we received very positive feedback from all the representatives, and what was really was good to hear is our neighbor down in Dare County, the Representative Senator Sanderson, jumped right on out and just said he would support and co-sponsor any efforts to get Currituck County funding for wastewater, anything that he could get. We provided him with our financial needs for wastewater. He took that all down, so we've got Representative Ed Goodwin is on board with as well. Senator Hanig is gonna sponsor that, so we've got all three of them on board. And the nice thing is Senator Sanderson, he's on the committee that appropriates the funding for the wastewater, and he was very in tune with Currituck need and was very supportive. So, that was a good thing, and our lobbyists were very surprised that we had a representative outside of our district that they covered jump right on board to help out. So, some good things, good visits up there. It was a great time, got to meet a lot of good people, and I'll let our Vice Chair talk a little bit more about it when she comes up. The next thing I want to talk about is our fire departments. Since I was elected in 2014, I was on the fire department well before that, but every meeting, I always talk about, twice a month, I talk about the volunteer fire departments. I always bring up about what they're doing, how you can get involved, what you can do, easy ways to get involved. So, they've been mentioned at least twice a month since 2014. We've also had fire departments play videos, and they've been aired, and nice recruiting videos. We've also had the fire departments come before us and do administrative reports. They talk about their departments, they talk about their needs, they talk about where they're at with recruitment, training, a lot of good meetings. So, it's been mentioned quite a bit, like I said, and this gets played back over and over. People can watch it on TV all the time. So, I've always been an advocate for the fire departments, and I think we talk about them quite a bit and what their needs are, and they're always needing volunteers, always have, always will, still will need that. And that being said, this Friday, Lower Currituck is having their annual fish fry. It's a good time to go to Station 5 in Grandy. Starts at 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM. You can help out, get a fish dinner there. You can meet the staff. You can tour the facility. You can look at some of the apparatus. You can talk to members, talk to the board members, and it's a good way to start the conversation, to get involved with the fire departments. They'd love to have you there. You can call them, find them on Facebook, their webpages. You probably drive by their station all the time. And, let's see. Lastly, one other thing I wanted to bring up, too, is when we sat down with our representatives up there, we asked them point-blank, "What's your opinion on impact fees? Is the state ever gonna get them?" And I believe their answer was, "Ain't never gonna happen." So, we asked them, and their answer to us was, "It's not gonna happen." So, we did ask out there again, right in their offices, and it's just not gonna happen. So, that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Owen Etheridge?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. This past week, I attended the Prayer Circle for Peaceful Waters Health and Wellness Center, participated in it. It was a very nice event. We wish Ms. Bynum the success in getting it up and going. Also, I read something the other day that Cory's Ditch over on Knott's Island, they're talking about closing it for recreational fishing, and it's got people stirred up on Facebook. So, that's something we need to find out about for sure. At our last meeting, Mr. Albury stood up and kept wondering why we couldn't fix the road. And we always tell people, "Well, it's because it's DOT's responsibility." So, I'm gonna take some time here. I did some research, and I'm gonna give a little history lesson on DOT in North Carolina. And I will say right up front that GS 136 is what gives DOT the power to do the things that they do. But the early roads in North Carolina typically followed an existing Indian trail, which began as a wild animal trail carved by deer and bison over many years. None of the early laws of North Carolina from 1663 to 1715 survive to this day, but roads still do. The first legislative act known as an Act Concerning Roads and Ferries was passed in 1715. From the earliest settlements to well after the US Civil War, each county was required to maintain their own roads and ferries. Public roads were to be laid out by a jury of 12 men appointed by each precinct for the county. This court was appointed a surveyor of roads, who was to summon all appropriate males twice a year to clear all the roads and to repair any public bridges. This appointee could also, excuse me, could call on the same men in case of an emergency. The first major road within North Carolina was built between the Noose River and the Cape Fear River from 1722 to 1724. The Noose-Cape Fear Road was incorporated into the King's Highway that stretched from Boston to Charlestown and was completed in 1735. As the population grew and moved further inland, other major roads were constructed and shown in the link to colonial roads. With statehood and the inevitable progress in transportation, fresh ideas were needed to get products from farms to the markets. In 1799, state legislation authorized the first turnpike road, which was in Brunswick County, to the NC-Tennessee state line. These privately-owned roads continued for more than 100 years and provided much better transportation than the typical county road. In 1849, North Carolina began to experiment with plank roads that lasted until the railroads proved a better alternative. The coming of the automobile brought about the greatest infrastructure project ever implemented in the United States. Governor Charles B. Acoch established the first State Highway Commission in 1901, and it included the state geologist, the commissioner of agriculture, and the secretary. With no budget, that group only filed one report in 1902. In 1915, the legislature created the State Highway Commission once again, this time a seven-member panel that included the governor, the state geologist, two road engineers, and three citizens appointed by the governor. This larger group was, in 1915, directed to meet the requirements for securing federal funds for highway construction. A third incarnation in 1919 enabled the commission to direct state improvement in road building, fueled by a large $50 million bond issued in 1921. This commission began the construction and maintenance of more than 6,000 miles of roads in North Carolina. Today, the state of North Carolina has around 80,000 miles of roads. This $50 million bond was raised by requiring a license fee and one cent tax on gasoline. The purpose was to connect all county seats with high-quality paved roads. Many dangerous railroad crossings were eliminated, many curves were straightened out, and the most steep gradients were reduced for an optimal 4%. With the 1921 Highway Act, the state government became officially responsible for maintenance of all state roads. And here's where we get caught in terms of the counties. In 1931, because of the Great Depression and the deterioration of county roads, it caused the state of North Carolina to take over maintenance of all roads within the state. And that's why we say today, "We can't do anything," and it goes back to 1931. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner McCord?
I'm gonna be quick, or try to be quick. I have a couple things that were addressed. I did meet with Ms. Lusk the other day, and I talked to the county manager as far as some of the drainage projects, which I'm, we're undertaking some, I guess, in the super near future, some RFPs to clear out some of those ditches that have been discussed in Moyoc, so that is something under the works. There's a lot of stuff going on in the county. Our meetings, obviously, this one's on TV. You can look at it on YouTube a couple days later, or you can watch it live. We have, everything we do is in front of the public. You know, there's no hide in that closet or something like that. But we have our budget meetings, April 13th and 14th. The doors are open if you wanna come sit in and watch. Those meetings, you can just sit and listen and watch. But all that stuff that we do is out in front of the public, so there's nothing behind the scenes, as sometimes you might read on social media. But don't believe everything you read on the Internet. And as far as the acre housing lots, we've discussed that as well. That's something that we're moving forward, moving in that direction, which I believe the board supports that. I do wanna touch on what Mr. Memes said about child safety at the schools. After that event that happened in Nashville, the horrendous, I just, I still can't fathom how somebody can hurt a child. If you dislike a person, I mean, I get that, but like to physically, just a random person that you don't know, especially a child, it's a sick world sometimes that we live in, that somebody could do that to a child. So, far as, and I wasn't even gonna bring this up, far as, like, if there's any threat so the public knows that goes to our schools, like anything, if a child says, "I'm gonna do this, or I'm gonna do that," the sheriff's office, we take that seriously and have a great working relationship with our superintendent and his staff. Far as what goes on, if a kid says he's gonna bring a pistol to school, or he's gonna do something or hurt somebody, there's a process that we do where mobile crisis is contacted. We do a physical home visit and do a search, obviously with their, you know, consent from the home to search to make sure there's no weapons, or the kid doesn't have access. If a child says that, "I'm gonna bring a gun to school," or whatever. So, there is a process that we handle, which is very detailed, very long, so that's something that this county, the sheriff's office, as well as the school system take very, that's as top priority as it could be. I mean, my phone might ring at 11 o'clock at night if we have to do something, and it doesn't matter what time of day it is, if something's noticed, you know, that's something we act on. So, like I said, especially with the stuff with the Nashville thing, and I'm just gonna go openly and say this, like, I do support in public schools of us having SROs in every school. It's a sick world we live in. I mean, look at the stuff that happened in Virginia Beach and the government center. We've had to change stuff, or we've had altercations. Here, where somebody, when our county manager was the attorney, the guy came up here, was demanding and cussing, and I was on duty that day and threw the guy out. But it happens, unfortunately, and like I said, you can't put a price tag on a child or a human life, to say. So, that's just something, I've had a lot of phone calls from school, from parents, from, you know, other stuff. I know where they've done surveys on different things that they think they need at the schools, and I mean, like I said, it's just, I just wanted to put that out there, that it's sad that you would need an SRO, a school resource officer, if somebody didn't know what SRO stands for. But, you know, school resource officer at a school. In the Nashville incident, the female that shot up the one school, like, on her list, and she said the reason why she didn't go to the other school, I don't remember if it was because there was armed, law enforcement, they were armed, whatever, but she didn't go to that school because there was somebody there protecting it and guarding it. And I mean, like I said, it's, you know, if somebody wants to complain about the cost of something, of how great we have it here, it's less than a penny of tax to have an SRO at every school. And if somebody don't like that in Currituck County, and I've said that, my wife hates when I say the state, you can move. I mean, you literally can move. If it's a penny to protect every child, you know, it's, that's priceless. So, and welcome back, Ms. Kitty Etheridge. I did see her Saturday. She was out. I thought she was partying when I saw her at Frog Island. That was the busiest that place ever was, but I think she was getting her dinner before she went to her show. So, we had a quick chat, and I hadn't seen her in a month, but welcome back. So, and that's it for me.
Thank you. Commissioner Beaumont?
Thank you, Ms. Vice Chair. First of all, you know, as Commissioner Payment said, our volunteers, we're always looking for folks. And the plug is, the volunteer departments offer free training. You don't have to pay a dime. They supply you with clothes. It's so cool. You get to ride in trucks and honk the horn. Anyway, so with that said, there's a lot that can be learned, and again, we're always looking for volunteers, because despite Kevin's resources, the county has no intention of taking over fire protection in the county, right? That is a worst-case scenario for us. The next thing I wanted to say is, I didn't have the opportunity to travel with the delegation to meet with Senator Hanig, but because he's the only guy I know that's up in the morning when I'm driving to work, he and I talk several times a week. So, I did call him to find out, so how'd it go? You know, what was your impression? And number one, he said, "What an outstanding trip it was," which, to me, the takeaway on that is, we should do that probably a lot more than we've been doing. The second thing he said was, he was very impressed by the group that we have helping us with lobbying, that they, you know, they impressed the socks off of him. And then, Mike, one of the things that he said was, he actually has $17 million in his budget for Moyoc's wastewater. So, he actually is not only on board, but that is in his budget that he's looking to get.
And just, I mean, they've got, I think, around $1 billion in state monies for, so, yes, that's why I think we should see a good, some help, and we're keeping our fingers close this year.
So, of course, I immediately then pinged him, and "How much do you have for Currituck Schools?" To which he said, "That's not a popular, that's not..." You know, the funding, I guess, from the state level comes in cycles, and we're not in a school cycle. We are in a infrastructure. I think part of that is probably federally funded that trickles down to the states. But, so, that's, school money was not in the budget. Sorry, Dr. Lewis. I did ask him what else, you know, what all, you know, got talked, was discussed, and 'cause I know one of the topics was, especially from the lobbyist firm, was to find out what state money was available for, one of my favorite subjects, and that's beach nourishment. The answer was, there is no state, there are no state funds available for... The answer was, there is no state, there are no state funds available for, for beach nourishment. You know, he and I have had a discussion ever since he first became a commissioner, you know, it's gotten cost ridiculous, and, you know, it's not showing to be, Dare County's proved it's really not sustainable, certainly no longer affordable, and it's not working 'cause now they're very interested in exploring some of the things that, that I've always been interested in. And that's, if there is a need, looking at some form, and I understand we gotta change state legislature to get it done, but let's get a fix in place, not a Band-Aid. That's, you know, structures off the beach that could help dissipate some of the energy that the waves are coming in, you know, go down that path. Well, now that Dare County is running out of options, now we've got a partner to the South. So I think there's gonna be a lot more opportunity to look at that. And let's see, that's, one of the things, Kevin, that, that you mentioned, that I think is, is warranted, several years ago, we actually, as a board, funded, going back to the, the tragedy in Nashville. One of the reasons why there were only nine individuals killed was they have a physical lock system that is in place, that their students were able to get behind and get protected. That woman shot, I think she expended 150-something rounds, and only nine individuals were killed.
Six.
Six, I'm sorry, my bad. You're exactly right. We have physical locks in
In all our schools.
Every classroom is protected by one. I saw the demo, I was part of the school's physical safety team that had meeting. It, it would take you well over 30 minutes with the, with a sledgehammer to get into the school classroom. That's not happening before law enforcement arrives. And again, you know, the, the policies they have with first responders is very similar to the one Currituck has, and that's first-on-scenes going in. So, anyway, yeah, losing any kids is a tragedy. That's all.
Commissioner White?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Commissioner Knight, I'm just hanging out over here, sitting in the middle.
You're still the chair.
Okay, thank you.
Thank goodness.
I feel better. You know, those, those locks were Jenna, Jenna locks, affectionately known, and I remember, they, they actually came before us to ask us for money to fund that. So one of our own students came up with that, and she's, uh, she's actually been accepted into the FBI. She just, yeah, so.
Her dad's one of our sergeants, too, at the sheriff's office.
And she's the one that came before us for it.
Yeah, yeah, so, she's gonna be running the FBI in a couple of years. I told them that when they called me about an interview, she worked for me for a couple of summers, outstanding young lady, Jenna Akers, so. Anyway, a couple of things that, as, as people were speaking, coming up with public comment, you know, the, the focus, the Kirkhook focus was mentioned, beach nourishment's in that, obviously it's a lively topic right now, and I think that the thing that was missed is, that was a big item of discussion at a retreat. It was in the focus because it was a big item of discussion at a retreat. It occupied quite a bit of our time, one of our days during our retreat. So it was, it was talked about in that light. We, we, the commissioners, don't actually control what's in the focus, that is done by county staff, mostly our public information officer, and then, of course, approval from the county manager. So, he lays that out, puts topics in there that are relevant. I have, in the past, asked that we had things in there about North Carolina law that are, or, and how counties work in North Carolina because of the influx of people that move here from other areas that don't understand, we don't have towns in this county, we don't have any cities in this county, and how, you know, the roads, this, this, no one so eloquently described the, the history of how we got to not be able to do roads. So occasionally, we can influence things that go in it, and, and so that's, that's kinda how the, the topics come out. It's based on what's going on and what's happening, and so we put that together at a staff level, not at a commissioner level. I will ask the county attorney, when we get to her comments, to talk about expert witnesses and substantive, you know, all those things, how we got there. Because not everything, even though it's in the UDO, there are outside factors that affect what we do, and most of that is lawyers suing someone. So there are court cases that actually affect how we do some of those things. The UDO is just a framework for all of that to be conducted. This past weekend, I was in Corral, I met with the folks at the Village, Ocean Hill Property Owners Association, so I just want to take a second to thank them for allowing me to come out there. Of course, beach nourishment was a major topic of discussion, as their houses are getting ready to fall in the ocean. And I had a lengthy discussion about what you talked about, Paul, with offshore structures, that, you know, as we move forward through this, with our beach management plan, that those offshore structures, if we could get something done at a state level, is absolutely imperative, that, I think everyone agrees that beach man, nourishment is not the beat-all, end-all, it is a no-win situation. You will be chasing your tail for the rest of your life and the rest of other generations' lives trying to do that. So ultimately, if we can affect wave energy in a completely different way, that is absolutely the way to go. So I had that discussion with them, and brought up the fact that you have many times mentioned that at these meetings. And, I think that's it. Welcome back, Kitty. Glad to see you here, and look forward to lively debates with you in the future.
Can I, can I add one, just when you brought up that topic about the, when we have the expert witnesses and all that? I, I just would, I, I do, I mean, I heard something come up about a, just, it's just a piece of paper. I, I think, you know, degrees and, and stuff, it's not just a piece of paper. You know, people take their time, devote their education to understand and learn certain topics, and it's not just a piece of paper, it's more than that, it's, it's someone, somebody put in the time and the effort to, to actually learn something in, in detail. I just wanted to add that to it.
If I may, one more following up on that, since you sparked something else. Yeah, it, it is that, and at the last meeting, I mentioned to the, to the public that came up here, that, you know, we, we, we put these things out, we notice them, the time is short, I will grant you that. The problem is, we as a board of commissioners don't want to be an obstructionist to people coming through and having potentially tens of millions, or maybe even hundreds of millions of dollars on the line for a project that's coming through. So we're not gonna put out this huge window in which someone comes in and applies, and it actually reaches the board of commissioners. That being said, if there's a particular agenda item that interests the general public, and they want to take the time to hire experts, or hire an attorney to represent them, we can absolutely delay that. And all it takes is a call to myself, to the county staff, you talk to Leanne, or your commissioner that represents you in your district, if it's in your, within your district, to say, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna do this. We can certainly delay when we hear that hearing before us, much like any other judge would if they have to delay something, a trial. So, there are ways to delay that, it doesn't have to happen on that specific date, and we have, in fact, had that happen before, where we have delayed things. So, it is not necessarily that it has to happen, and I, I want to encourage people and let them know that we are, in fact, able to move that, and we do want to hear from you. Even if we can't necessarily accept your testimony, the public should be heard. It is your house, ultimately, and you should be heard.
Ms. Vice Chair, if I could piggyback briefly on that.
I, I do have my own commissioners' comments.
Yes, ma'am, I know. Well, you could take all the time in the world, 'cause you're running this show.
Okay. Mr. Beaumont?
You know, when folks come forward and have valid observations, and this is specific to the expert witnesses, we, I think, I'll speak for the board, and if you disagree with me, you can tell me later, we don't necessarily like the way it's set up from an expert witness testimony. We have no choice other than to invite a lawsuit by going contrary to expert testimony that is presented before this board. We have, in fact
No, no, I see, yes, you're probably expanded that, too. I was just agreeing with you.
Okay, well, then just say, shut up, Mike.
I was agreeing with you.
Got it, okay. Well, I'll let the county's attorney finish my
You're doing great. Good job. No, you
But the point is, we don't like it either, but it, it's
Excellent. Hey, I wanna put on rec, I'd like to put on record, I got told no one done when I wanted to add something.
That wasn't under my watch, Commissioner McCord. Okay, so, thank you, and I'll just keep mine extremely brief. First of all, since several people have already touched on Raleigh, I will just say there is $1 billion, the billion dollars available for infrastructure. I am counting on our members of the General Assembly to give Currituck its fair share. I am counting on that. I have, I came away from that with all but a guarantee, an assurance, and I feel good about that. I feel good that other infrastructure may be taken care of, including the airport and some other projects. I feel good about the fact that Bobby Hennig is a Currituck-minded senator, and Ed Goodwin, he has a heart for this area, so I, I am counting on them delivering our portion of that billion dollars. I'll, I'll address something else Ms. Lusk said. I, too, am excited and anxious for the one-acre lots to cool off the building that we have had over the last few years, so I look forward to having that brought before us very soon. And then finally, I just want to say, this week, I have had my eyes refocused on how wonderful our county staff is. So many people comment on our staff, and I got to see them in full action this week. I spent a lot of time, a lot of time, with our staff, and I am just blown away by the caliber and the mix of young and old that we have, not old, young and experienced that we have.
Your old.
Oh, young and experienced, and it's exciting to see how it all comes together as this beautiful machine that we call Currituck County, and I am just so impressed by the knowledge, the dedication, and the passion that they have for our county. And welcome back to Kitty Etheridge, I have missed you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to our county manager for our county manager's report.
I guess, report from the old.
Sorry, I didn't name names. I didn't name names.
Season.
Yes, I, I, again, would just echo that, that our trip to Raleigh on Tuesday, I think, was very beneficial. I think Commissioner Beaumont is correct, we ended up learning that indeed is important for us to be there more often. I did not realize that, but our lobbyists certainly pointed out to us that folks are watching when you're there and interacting with your senator or other legislators, and I was kinda surprised to learn that, you know, but, but that they, they assured us that folks are watching, and when they see the senator or representative interacting with a group of people, they wanna know who they are and what's that all about. And so I think it is important for us to, to be there more often. Again, we, our, our current group of lobbyists that we have retained have changed my view on lobbyists. They have been, since the moment we signed the contract, incredibly responsive to the county and county staff. We hear from them about week, well, definitely weekly, they give us an update and a report on pending legislation and that which has been introduced, but we also get continual updates about those legislators that they have visited with and the kind of responses they're getting to our legislative agenda. So they, they have certainly earned, in my view, what we are paying them, this year certainly. One other thing that we did, that we brought up with Senator Hennig was, asked that he be mindful of legislation that continues to take away the authority and power of cities and counties, because ultimately, that takes away the authority of citizens on the local level. And he asked us what we were talking about, we did go through with him a couple of items that Commissioner Etheridge, Owen Etheridge, had brought up with me, accessory dwelling unit legislation that would allow for, require cities and counties to allow accessory dwelling units on any residentially zoned property within their jurisdiction. And then there's one other piece of legislation that we talked over with him, I just
332.
332, yeah.
I was trying to, what, I don't remember
Engineers.
Oh, that's correct. We, we have, we have no choice but to rely upon an engineer seal upon plans for certain types of structures. Our building inspectors will lose any kind of authority or ability to review, interpret, and basically ask any questions or seek any modification to certain plans. I did ask Senator Hennig also about the, the legislation that had been introduced to put the tier issue into a study commission. For those who don't know what that is, the, the counties are ranked by the North Carolina Department of Commerce in tiers from one, which is the most economically distressed counties, to three, which are the least economically distressed counties. Currituck County is a tier-three county, deemed to be the least, in fact, we are ranked number one, meaning we are, of all 100 counties in North Carolina, the, deemed the least economically distressed county in the state. And what that means as a consequence is, we are not eligible for many grant opportunities at the state level. In fact, we've been denied twice for the Tolles Creek Elementary School project, which now is probably $50 million, we estimate, to build that school, while other counties around us are reaping the benefit of those grant opportunities. And so part of the issue that we have, and expressed to Senator Hennig, is we don't understand how it is that a county that is attracting population gets nothing to assist it with that increase in population, but those counties that are losing population seem to be the ones that are eligible for all the grant money. So, we had that conversation as well. And then lastly, I was made aware at the end of last week that the Department of Transportation is conducting a transportation study for movement of employees from Cho'wah and P'Quimmin's Pasquetank counties to Dare County, and they seem to forget that Currituck County also, and Corrala in particular, is, is a place where folk come from those inner counties to work. So I'll be writing a letter this week to the, the head of that, that project, requesting that they add Currituck County into part of that analysis to determine in what way such a program might be of assistance to Currituck County and our employers in particular in Corrala. That's all I have.
Going back to the tier system, we're three, Dare County's two.
Oh, yes.
But, they lost it. This is their last year. They become tier-three next year.
If they don't change the system.
Well, again, well, we, we, we understand there's not gonna be a study, that, I guess I didn't finish the story, but that Senator Hennig said that that, that bill is not gonna go anywhere in the legislature, there will not be a reevaluation or analysis, at least during this session, of the tier program.
I think his exact words is, the Senate doesn't do studies.
Yes.
Yes, that's exactly his words.
That's why I said, let's introduce a local bill to have us move down.
Right.
And all they can do is say no.
Well, not a bad idea. All right, thank you, County Manager McCree. I'll turn it over to the county manager for her, I mean, the county attorney, sorry for her report.
Thank you, Ms. Vice Chair. I have nothing to report, but going back to the importance of expert testimony, so quasi-judicial hearings, they, decisions must be based on material substantial incompetent evidence. There are four strict review standards within our Unified Development Ordinance, as well as by statute, and some of those require the testimony of expert witnesses. The, the difference between an expert witness and a lay witness is, an expert witness has the experience, the training, the expertise to testify to that specific issue. For example, the injuring, whether the, the applicant will injure adjoining property values, typically we require an appraiser for that. So, so expert testimony is very important, in fact, it is required for the board to make a decision based on substantial material incompetent evidence.
So how would you qualify someone? So, last meeting, we saw a realtor come up here, and although she hadn't been working in the field very long, let's say a realtor came up with 20-plus years of experience, or 30-plus years of experience, can they
They certainly can lay the fa, so typically, you would lay the foundation for, to be qualified as an expert witness, and that could be someone that just comes up, it doesn't have to be someone that's provided by an attorney. Anybody can try to lay that foundation, and then it's up to the, up to the board to accept them as an expert witness in that area that they're gonna testify.
Yeah, if, if someone comes before the board and presents themselves as an expert witness, based on whatever credentials they feel that they have, and the board makes a decision based on that determination, it could get appealed to a higher court, and then they would look at, would they dig deeper into exactly what that expert witness has?
Absolutely, yes, they would.
So, so what we vote on here could get overruled in the higher court, based on, if we pass something, and we don't, and, and we
something and we don't, and we proceed that we did not vote on appropriate expert witness or materials, a higher judge could overrule our decision.
Yes, that could be appealable. I mean, if you accepted lay testimony for the example I used, injuring adjoining property values, that is definitely appealable. There's grounds for appeal.
I think we've had that happen to us before. We've lost a case, especially the sole.
Yeah, and laying the foundation includes, you would want to include information about your education, job experience, any kind of awards you may have received, any additional training, continuing education, things like that.
So using Bob's example, using Bob's example, for example, you know, a real estate agent that comes up with 20 years of experience can have all the practical, you know, I know this house, whatever, but where the statistical analysis to be able to present the facts to substantiate her position, that's where we would have to decide, or where an appellate court could look at and go, well, that really didn't qualify her as an expert.
Correct.
I think you would look at the fact that a bank would not accept her appraisal.
Right.
As a legitimate appraisal.
But I will say, practical life experience, in some aspects of what we look at, is absolutely relevant and could be absolutely taken as an expert witness testimony. So depending on, you know, the other things going on, lifelong experience can in fact be considered credible.
That's right.
Actually, that was a question.
Yes, yes.
I was asked this last week, and had some time, and I did some research, and the Supreme Court, North Carolina Supreme Court, ruled in 2020, and Senator Irvin wrote the majority opinion, and it was P., PHG, I believe that's right, PHG Asheville LLC versus the City of Asheville. And it was a unanimous decision to deny them a hotel. And the Supreme Court reversed it and reaffirmed the criteria that they did not have material incompetent witnesses to make that decision and overturn the city council's decision.
Okay. Thank you for your report. We'll now move into the administrative reports. We have the Parks and Recreation Master Plan presentation, and we have a representative from Consultants McGill and Associates.
Good evening, everyone. You all know me, Jason Weeks, Parks and Recreation Department. A while back, we hired, the county hired McGill and Associates to conduct a revamp of our comprehensive system-wide master plan. And so Mr. Mike Norris is here from McGill tonight to make a brief presentation of a fairly lengthy document. So there's going to be things that he may not cover that'll be in the document, and you all get a copy of that in the near, in the near future. But Mike, if you want to come on up and have your presentation?
I'm here if you guys need any questions from me. Good evening, Madam Vice Chair, Mr. Chair, Board of Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to present this. Again, as Mr. Weeks mentioned, I'll make this brief, but I do want to cover some of the highlights that I feel like would be important for you to, in consideration of adopting the master plan, or for any questions, answers you may have. Just quickly, what I want to cover this evening is the overall plan summary. I want to talk about some of the discovery with the community, how we engage the community, some of the results, and then what do we do with that community meeting and that the recommendations and proposals. Part of that, I'm sure you're wondering, well, what's the cost? So we'll cover that as well. The overall plan summary, as Mr. Weeks mentioned, is a pretty big document. There's a lot in here, a lot of data that I think is relevant. It's what we use to, in order to understand who we are and what we have and what we're going to do, that's covering these elements here in the different sections. One of the most important elements, of course, is the needs analysis and community engagement, as well as the action implementation plan. How, you know, we've got so many things we want to do, how do we do that? And this plan covers that. Just a real quick study of our map and our existing facilities. We have 11 parks, recreation facilities, and then a lot of, as you know, 16 public beach access points distributed throughout the county. A lot of good service in giving different locations for multiple park users. That's important for us. Community engagement, one thing I want to point out is, we've all talked about growth in the county. And growth with this document is important for us to understand where we are now with needs, but also understanding, to respond to the future growth. What does that mean to us, and where is that going to occur? So we have, again, by 2032, the data we had discovered was, we could be up to over 38,000 in population. Community engagement, though, we did several different methods. One was a survey questionnaire. We had that online, as well as hard copies available. This example here on the left, we had these marketing cards we passed out, and folks could actually scan, scan the QR code and pull that up on their phone, so it's real accessible. We also held some in-person drop-in meetings at different locations on different dates to allow multiple opportunities, as well as try to engage with different portions of the county. So you can see, we had over 217 participants in those six public meetings. So that's a really good turnout. We do a lot of this across the state, and that's had a very positive response. In that, in that survey, we had a visual preference survey. I don't know if any of you had a chance to participate, but we had several different options for the public to evaluate on what they would like to see, probably double the number we see here on the screen. And so from that, participants get to choose what they would like to see. So the top five of, there was probably 40 elements to choose from, were splash pad, adventure play area, fishing piers, national, natural surface trails, and boat ramps. So you can see some aquatic-based recreation was, is important to our community. And then followed by six through 10 athletic fields, mountain bike skills course, treehouse camping, indoor recreation, and canoe kayak launch. Some other things that were mentioned, of course, is down at the bottom, these were kind of our ride-ins, but bench swings and outdoor fitness stations. I want to just share just a couple of survey results. There were a lot more questions in our survey, but some of the things that I felt like were important. Most of the response that we received were from residents that lived here or second-home residents that have properties here in the county. Age, we had a good cross-section of age that was participant. We had over 8% survey response, which is a really good response. You know, a lot of communities are trying to achieve 5%, so I thought, we felt like eight was really, really strong to give a good representation there. And again, as I mentioned, the majority were from Currituck County. In rating our facilities, we had excellent, from excellent, fair, and good. Some don't know, what does that mean? We'll talk about that a little bit more. But again, that's usually what we see in most departments. Recreation staff, again, not knowing that, I know your staff, you've got a very good, dedicated staff. Your facilities are very well-maintained. The facilities we see across the state, Currituck County has some very well-maintained facilities. They take a lot of pride in making sure those are well-maintained. So again, good, fair, excellent. What amenities and parks do we typically use in the county? Your top five were your access points at the ocean, Historic Corolla Park, the Sound and River Boating access points, Currituck Community Park, and Maple Park. Those probably aren't a surprise to you. Those are very popular destinations. And then check below, what, this was another question, what could we do to our existing parks? Improved trails, greenways, parking, basketball courts, dog park was mentioned, playgrounds and athletic fields. Splash pads was mentioned quite often, picnic and sitting areas. So again, a lot of passive recreation, access points for boating. So taking that community input, we wanted to develop a guide for the document and what we would do, a guide, a compass, to give us direction. We dived in in a little deeper detail on the specific recommendations, but I want to talk about each park facility. And many of these need to have more of a specific master plan for each park, to understand what we have, how we can utilize the space that we have to meet the needs that are for the future. So Currituck County, the community park, again, there's a lot of park development there. We feel like there's a need for adjacent park property. But again, a lot of day-use activities, we feel like that can meet, be met through this park with the expansion. County Rural Center, again, some specific elements there with boardwalk expansion, tent, treehouse camping platforms, education signage, outdoor classroom, Corolla Park. Again, there, close to the water, we want some more accessible canoe kayak launch and picnic stations. Corners Road Park, boardwalk, again, tent camping platforms, that's becoming a growing trend in the state and in the region. Restroom facility there. Shingle Landing Park, lighted multipurpose fields, and expansion of the parking, the sound park. We felt like this, this really needs a, just a fresh look. A redevelopment of this park might be appropriate to meet the growing needs. So development of a site-specific master plan would help in moving that forward. And Maple Park, a fishing platform. Corova Beach Park, again, a site-specific plan, but consider accessibility there, walking paths that are accessible, and playground updates and other day-use activities. Knott's Island Ruertown Park, again, the site-specific plan, but expanding indoor recreation space, parking, accessible paths, in the shade, that was specific, and fitness stations. And public access points. We need to maintain that, improve it, and follow the recommendations from the 2040 Vision Plan. Veterans Memorial Park, walking paths, restroom, fitness park, course, that's like several fitness stations together place, so it's using, instead of extension along a walking path, it's there together. Boardwalk in repair, and a feasibility to develop a small fee-based public transient dock as part of an existing boardwalk. We feel like that could be a good asset for this park facility. Walnut Island Park, again, a site-specific plan, parking and boat, boat access needs, and north-west river camping platforms, as we mentioned. You can see an example there at the bottom of the page. That's a, you've got so much natural resources that are wonderful to visit, and camping, boating, all can take advantage of that in a passive sense. So the overall facility development, we've estimated that at around $15 million. I want to talk about future facilities. A new community park near Moayak, again, that's growing really, really quickly. We're behind now, and it's going to continue to grow in that area. A community park near Grandy in Jarvisburg, two neighborhood parks at Coin John Corolla, and then a mini park in South Corolla. Those new facility developments would be estimated at around $15 million, with an overall cost of all these together is over, well, around the neck of $30 million. Now, that's, not all these are going to be done in a 10-year span, obviously, but we want to think about that, where the needs are, and then respond to those, and also where the opportunities occur. That could be through grant funding. The county's used the Parker Recreation Trust Fund over the years. That's an opportunity for the county to use a matching grant. Land and Water Conservation Fund is another opportunity there to explore in consideration of these other funds to help offset some of the costs. So I went through that quickly, but let's not forget staffing. With every park we add, we need to consider that. So our immediate needs for the next several years would be two athletic assistants, two park attendants, contract programming instructors, that's, they may not be necessarily an employee of the county, it may be someone that teaches aerobics or something where they could provide programming for the county. Assistant park attendants and referees, those are part-time, but they are needed. And so it's always in demand for good staffing. And future needs, as we mentioned, as we add park facilities, we'll have to address staffing with that. In the future, we see an assistant director, athletic superintendent, recreation specialist, athletic specialist and recreation assistant, two of each of those last three positions. So priorities, we're growing quickly in Currituck County. Parkland is going to be needed. Once it's gone, it's hard to get back. So if there's opportunities that address the locations for park expansion or for new park facilities, that needs to be always a priority with any community, maintaining what we have with existing parks. Again, we talked about the site-specific plans. That's important because it lets us know what we can do on a piece of property, but also what the cost might be and how it can be phased or complemented with grant funding. Accessibility to our parks is really important. And with our, with the growing need for technology, public Wi-Fi park facilities are in demand. One of the things that comments from the survey was, they may not know where all the parks are. So we feel like there may be some, we need to bolster our website, where our park facilities are, and how to get to them. A lot of communities are, you know, they've got apps for a community where they can understand, what can I do while I'm here for a weekend, and list all the park facilities. And so signage would also complement that. So that's a brief summary there on the priorities. A lot of that's low-hanging fruit that can be done quickly. Some are more long-term projects.
Jake, can I ask a question?
Yes. Are you finished with your presentation?
I'm complete.
Okay. Commissioner McCree?
Going back to the staffing and the immediate needs, there's, you have done, could you go over that again, where you said contract programming instructors? What was, what were you referencing on that again, or what was that thought on that?
So there's different ways of doing that. If, if a, if there's a need for an aerobics instructor or some type of specialty programming, the county may not hire a specific individual that would be an employee, but they could contract with a concessionaire, if you will, who would provide that programming, and maybe there's an agreement that, you know, for you to provide this, this is the cost in return.
Because I know with the YMCA, we partner with a lot of stuff, and I know they work with the rec. Would that be something, I don't know if Jason, I mean, would that be something that would be maybe partnered with the Y, or would they, because they do a lot of that already?
Yeah, well, we, so we have an agreement with the YMCA where we don't compete for services. So, you know, a very common one across Parks and Recreation departments would be aerobics, for instance. We wouldn't look into one of that.
Because that's a program they already offer. But it could be things that are.
Things that they don't offer that we could look into.
Yes, if it was a, you know, a line dance class, and they don't offer, and we wanted to try.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't looking at competing with them, but this is, okay.
So one of the things you brought up was the second park in Moayak, and I'm curious, because I, we have, no, no, no. As I understood it, we're going to expand the park we have in Moayak, correct?
I think that's the plan.
So the study is suggesting land somewhere else in Moayak for a second park prior to expanding the one that we have?
Yeah, I think, I think the plan is saying that eventually you're going to need to add another site as well, to cover the region.
Particularly with expansion of land, if it's inadequate to, not adequate enough to meet the needs of the community, you may to meet the needs of the community, you may have to likely add a second location. The, the growth you're going to be experiencing in that area, it's, it's, you know, a lot of that additional 10-year population growth is going to be in that area.
So. But a major feature of that, and Jason, you might, you may not be aware of it, but, and I'll use Foss as an example, there's like a major recreation playground, swimming pool, I think, is planned for that. So there's, and that was one of the things, or one of the, the steps that we can use to help alleviate, I'm going to say burden to the county, but, you know, encourage developers to put in their stuff, right? Because every time we add another park, you know, that, I'm not telling you anything that you don't know, so this is for the folks watching. You know, it sounds, adding a park sounds easy until you have to maintain that park, you got to keep it up, you got to make sure that, you know, it's supervised or overseen, otherwise you wind up with stuff getting broken and all of that kind of stuff. So, you know, it's not just as simple as put in some playground equipment and away we go.
Yeah, and you brought up an excellent point. I, I met with Kevin Kemp and talked about the development fees that they pay in, the fee in LuLa for Parks and Rec, and I, I think I talked to most of the board about that, as I want, we talked about everything, but do they necessarily need to pay that, or can they build their own playground? Because a lot of developers might prefer to do something nice and keep people in the community. The thought process in the past was, well, it has to be open to the public. Well, no, it's a private community playground, and that's the hang-up, is the mindset of it has to be open to the community. Well, it is, it's the community in which the people that live there, it's not open to the public.
And, you know, part of that challenge is when we look for reduced density, right? Less houses per, per acre. One of the challenges that most of the developers that we've heard from is, okay, well, what do we do with, you know, the fields, right? Or, and, and so this becomes, it doesn't impact density at all, it provides something that actually puts that land to work and actually doing something. So I, I think that's something that could be a win all the way around.
Definitely should explore it further.
Absolutely. Our, our parks, I will say, Jason and your staff, I went Saturday, took Kinsley to the Maple Park, there was 20 people there, it was busy, and that's a nice, nice park. It's, they're always clean, Moayok's always clean, and it's like a good tool to make sure she behaves, hey, I'll take you to the park if you do this. The Wi-Fi thing just baffles me because I was there Saturday, I hope this guy's not watching, but if he is, he should have been watching his kid. But a kid got hurt Saturday, and like another dad, and then like we witnessed it, and, and the dad was like playing on his phone. I mean, are you kidding me? You're outside, it's nice, leave your phone in the car, you know what I'm saying? I didn't even answer my phone for an hour and a half, if you can believe that.
I don't believe it.
It happened.
It is, we, we do frequently receive requests for Wi-Fi service, mainly around the athletic complex.
I get that part of it for the ball, so they can keep up with the, to inform the other, the family members of.
Bring a hotspot.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, well, that's kind of our answer.
Yeah, exactly. But I mean, they do, and this is a compliment to you, and Jason, when something gets vandalized, I get that email in the morning of, you know, from the weekend where somebody's. But, um, I, one thing I will say, our ballfields are so busy, like with two Saturdays ago, when opening day of soccer, the ballfields had a pretty hefty tournaments that weekend, and they were parking, the parking was like.
They parked everywhere.
Everywhere. It was, it was the busiest I've seen it two Saturdays ago. They literally had parked all the way to the fence, to the public safety building. It was, so like, that's one thing I would say, whatever we have in parking, especially for a big area, probably think more, i.e. the Moayok Park. I mean, there's not that many parking spots, but there's 20-some acres parking the grass. I mean, you're just parking on weeds pretty much, so you're not hurting nothing.
And that's one of the, in the future plans for, at Shingle Landing in Moayok is a, is another parking area, another, a large pavilion and, at one time, it was an amphitheater.
So one of the questions I had in, in looking at what some of the people's responses were, and I don't know if you were able to capture this, but, you know, I'm wondering if we're doing a great job informing our residents what we do have to offer, because a lot of the things on that list, you're not going to have at every single park in the county, right? That's either cost prohibitive or just you can't pull that off there. Yet just about everything on the list is available somewhere in some format, except trees, tents and trees, which.
Splash pad.
And a splash pad. I just find that to be, by the way, which kind of reminds me, are, do we have the, the camp sites in the water, like the blue way, whatever?
We have three currently, so the image, I don't know if you caught that or not.
No, we're old. I'm sorry, I'm old.
Yeah, on the North West River, we have a cluster of three camping platforms. Our initial, like, I believe it was this past year, we had budgeted for expanding three more from like Corners Road on the DOT remediation area for, for 168 when it went in Moayok.
Do we have an idea of what, how much they're being used?
Yeah, we have, in the, in the right timeframe, meaning cooler weather, so depending on how, how the weather's going, the fall, early winter, most, we're getting towards the tail end of it now. It's most, it's every weekend thing, it might be two or three people, it could be 20 people. So that kind of varies, but there's a lot of, we just sent out a bunch of flyers through, through the Dismal Swamp. They just had a paddle-to-the-border event, and we just put out 400 flyers, went through Travel and Tourism helped me with that. And, um, so it's gaining steam all the time, so most every weekend, if the weather's not hot, mosquitoes, mosquitoes aren't an issue.
No bugs, no mosquitoes, no snakes, got it.
Yeah, so, I mean, if the weather's right, it's pretty much every weekend. And that's just people, that's just the people we know.
All three, or just like?
Sometimes it's all three.
Okay.
Sometimes it's just one or two people that just take up one platform.
Pickleball court.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? We appreciate your presentation. Thank you.
We'll be getting you guys a, a full, a version of the full document.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to the next agenda item. It's old business. It is a second reading of an ordinance amending chapter 11-23 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances, storage of garbage on the 4x4 area. And for that, I'll turn it over to our county attorney.
Thank you. This is the ordinance that was before the board at our last meeting, but it does require, or it did, the first reading require unanimous vote tonight, it just requires a majority to pass. Just as a background, this ordinance, when it was originally drafted, had some old zoning districts, R01, R02, which now they are, that's SFR and SFO. R01 is SFO, R02 is SFR, and that's either Corolla or the 4x4 area. So we had a meeting back, I think in September, about these, the trash issues, especially in the 4x4 area. So this is just a result of that meeting. And so the, the main provisions, other than changing those zoning districts to comply with, with what is current, each residential unit in SFO and SFR must have a minimum of four containers. And each residential unit container in the SFR district shall not exceed 40 gallons in capacity. In each residential vacation rental unit, there must be one container for each bedroom with a minimum requirement of four containers, but a max requirement of 10, so they don't have to have more than 10. And I believe that, that's the main, those are the main changes to that ordinance. Again, it requires majority vote to pass, and if there's any questions, let me know.
Okay, any comments, questions? If not, I'll look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, it passes. And then the next item is new business. We have two board appointments. The first one is for a consensus appointment for the Ocean Sands and North Crown Point Watershed District Advisory Committee. We are looking to appoint Janice Timberlake to fill an unexpired term ending June 6, 2023. Any comments or concerns?
Got a question.
Okay.
She, her term, this term will expire on June 6th. Can we go ahead and give her a full term now?
I'll look to the county manager or county attorney for that.
Well, your ordinance speaks to the filling of an unexpired term. Certainly someone who's appointed to fill an unexpired term may then be appointed to their first full regular term and the subsequent terms they're allowed after that. I think I might suggest to you, given the ordinance, that you appoint her to fill the unexpired term and then bring it back in, at the time that it expires, in order that we maintain the staggered terms of that advisory board.
Okay. Look for a motion to approve Janice Timberlake.
I'm going to approve one of the conditions that I cited.
Okay, can I get a second? All right, all in favor? Anybody opposed? Okay. The next is for the Wild Horse Advisory Board. We have a consensus appointment for Rhonda Galco to fill the at-large off-road resident vacancy for a three-year term expiring April 3, 2026. Any comments or concerns on this one?
No, spoke with her Friday to talk about this, and she's good to go.
Okay.
So I'll move for approval.
All right, can I get a second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. Last but not least, under new business, we have the consent agenda. Are there any comments, concerns, or anything we need to discuss? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all opposed? All right. And with that, I will recess our regular meeting and call to order a special meeting of the Tourism Development Authority. Do I have to get that approved?
Nope.
I'll make a motion to approve the, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, just a budget amendment.
Okay, all right, and.
Make a motion to approve the budget amendments.
All right.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
And then we have to move to adjourn.
And then I will now recess the.
We need to adjourn the TDA.
Yeah, that's what.
I will move to adjourn the Tourism Development Authority.
Okay, adjourn, so I used the wrong word.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now we will reconvene the regular meeting. And then I will move to enter a closed session pursuant to NCGS 143-318.11A3 to consult with the county attorney to discuss pending litigation in the matter of 85 and Sunny versus Currituck County and its Board of Commissioners, file number 2-22CV001FL, and to preserve the attorney-client privilege.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Kevin.
Okay, so what do I?